Good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens. Let's pray together. Our Father, it is a great pleasure this evening to gather with citizens of Jasper and with leaders of Jasper to do the work of our city. We are grateful, Father, for a long history that we have of men and women who has given us leadership across the decades, across centuries, who have cared for this city and cared for the people of this city. Lord, on occasion, we recognize that we have done things that weren't right, but we also recognize, Lord, that we have worked together as a city and we've worked together as men and women who cared for each other. We ask, Lord, now that you would give us wisdom, that you would give our leaders, our mayor and our council, wisdom as they consider the business that is before us today before them. We pray, Lord, that you would be with us in unity, that you would give to us a deep concern for one another. Lord, we all know that the psyche of our community has taken a severe blow in recent days. We have found ways to express our concern and our unity with one another. We've especially in our places of worship asked for your peace to reign upon us. We ask still that this come, that it be here, that we bow ourselves before you and we pledge ourselves to one another, that we will do your work and the work for the good of the citizens of this city and beyond. Thank you. That even while we do the work that is before us, that we do it recognizing that there is a spirit that is above us, you, that everlasting God, and that we do best when we do right by you. Help us to love each other more. I pray these things in the name of my Savior, the Savior of many who are here, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Lord, ask each city council member to review their binders for the information. The city council members on SRMPA and Regional Plan and Commission that send your binders. Next item, the departmental reports. Is there anything to report from the departments? Questions from council? Any questions from council on departmental reports?
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Yes, councilman sample.
Barbers Street is correct. Whoever, whoever's supposed to listen to this.
We can't hear you right anymore.
Barbers Street's like a highway. Worse than a highway, interstate. Good shot. Put my pick.
Okay. Any other public, any other departmental questions on departmental reports? Next, none? Okay, councilmembers. Next, we have public comments. The first person we have is Mr. Jesse Frazier. Jesse Frazier, you have three minutes.
Jesse Frazier, I live in East Jasper. Want to talk about number seven, the continuing services of SC Energy. There've been a lot of talk about electric rates, but I haven't heard too much about the water rates. What I was asking was, or asking council was, is this same group going to be in charge of coming up with something for the water rates, sewer rates and garbage rates as we go forward?
Thank you. Next person we have. Mr. Michael Stevenson.
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Stevenson. I've been present here for ten years. I'm also, I'm also a long business owner. And the first thing and most important thing I want to say is, I've got three people that I want to give praise to at City Hall. Ms. Christina appeared at the front desk, Mr. Justin, who's a supervisor, and Mr. Derek, who's a code clerk officer. These three people, in the ten years I've been here, actually made me believe that a couple of weeks ago, that the city actually cares about the residents. Okay? And all the time I've been here, that's the worst time this has happened. Y'all, these crazy guys, and they don't know they're doing a great job. Second thing I want to say is, in February of last year, I turned in a work order and told people up here at the front office that this ditch was fixing to get up under my yard. Wash it. First, it washed down my retainer wall. I didn't say nothing. I made a phone call, they said, "We're going to get on top of it." I never heard from them, ever. Turned around, I made another phone call, complained, so I've already been up here once, they're going to take care of it. It finally got taken care of. May 22nd of this year, it was finally taken care of, and somebody finally addressed it. Now, to say what I really wanted to say was this. I started in February. I come up here, nobody ever contacted me, told me what they found out, what was going to be done about it, nothing. Turned right around, called up here and said, "Look, your boss left a retainer wall there. Get somebody over here to check on it." Nobody ever showed up, nobody snuck in my door. Not like your bad one. In this whole room, there's one guy right here, I've had to run him. That's him. One man in this whole town. I've been here ten years. I don't understand. Can't somebody just come pop on my door and say, "Hey, we got you both, we're going to take care of you?" It's not happening. If it's not happening to me, who else is it not happening to? Okay? I understand the city has a lot of things to take care of. I am a maintenance man, I have back to the country condo associate, medical associate. I have forty-five buildings. When I walked in there a year and a half ago, I had four pages of work orders, I got one page by myself. So I know it can be done. The city needs to talk to the residents for a person to person. Don't send them a letter, don't go up there and say, "Well," make them feel like they're actually cared. That's the way, because I didn't feel like it until recently. I run into, I had six months where I had heart problems, so I have a good record for two months. My yard got grew, grew up, everything went, running that basket, basically. Derek comes putting down on my, on my lawn, he gets a picture.
Three minutes. Three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to say, thank y'all, I appreciate y'all coming out to take care of the problem.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Next, we have comments by Mr. Bo Lember, public comments.
First of all, I give my praises and honor to my Lord, Savior, Jesus Christ, the Savior of Jackson, Texas. A lot's been going on, and it's unfortunate what took place, but my concern is a lot of people walk around in fear, fear is not of the Lord. We don't need that, we don't want that, we have to do better. It takes a village, you didn't say what color. It takes a village to raise a family. I come here in love, honor and respect. This man right here knows, I gave him a hug a couple of weeks ago, hooked the life out of him, because I love unconditionally. It's a simple task, all we have to do is, the Bible says, it's not me. Love thy neighbor, love your fellow mate, no matter what color, we all are here together. It's not one individual here that would want to be here by themselves on this earth. I wouldn't. All I do is come to you guys and say, "Let us love each other." We see a problem, let's come with a solution.
Okay, that's it for the public comments. I'd like to go back to the departmental reports for a minute. Is there anyone here from ANL subdivision? No? Okay. All right, thank you. I'd just like for everyone to know, the reason why nothing was responded to for public comments, please understand that city council cannot discuss any presented issue, nor can it take any action on any issue at this time, except that a statement of fact, including policy, may be made responsive to an issue, which is Attorney Jones' opinion JC-0169. We'll move on to items for action, discussion and/or action. Consider approval for two sets of minutes, regular call meeting, city council meeting May 7th, 2024, and special call meeting, city council meeting, May 13th, 2024. We have a motion to approve by councilman sample. Can I get a second? Second by councilman Barber. Any further discussion on this? Items need to be corrected. Do you vote? Can we get a vote?
Yes. All in favor.
All in favor, can we get a vote? All in favor? Okay, no polls? Motion passes unanimously. We have four members present, just in case I didn't say this earlier, but Ms. McCroskey will not be here because, you know, she has a family emergency, so that's why she's not Item number two, consider for approval, authorizing the procurement process for a grant administrator and appointing a ratings committee for resilient communities program grant through Texas GLO.
Mayor, council, this is a grant that our code enforcement and building officials come across. It is to help them with some public service material and other things, like the flood plane, hospital, some other programs that they use day to day to track all their work orders and everything through their department. And this is a grant that we're eligible for, and I'd like to go out and do a request for proposals, where we can see if we can get a grant administrator as a first step.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Council?
We can get up to $300,000 out of it. There's no match on this one.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on that? Can we get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by council, does that sound? Home, motion by councilman Holmes, can we get a second? Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three, consider for approval, accepting a donation from Jasper County Surplus Equipment to the City of Jasper, including one hazmat truck and one swat plane.
Mayor, council, this is a few pieces of equipment was involved back in 2000, or somewhere in that neighborhood, through a federal grant. We've been maintaining them and using them. The county's just taking some of the stuff they got and they're just, to the local ESD and other people who's got some of that equipment through their grant, they're just donating back to us, and we just need a motion to accept it.
We have a motion by councilman Holmes, can we get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
What, are both of those pieces of equipment functional?
They're both in really good condition.
Very good, thank you.
Can we get them? Oh, we got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, consider for approval, Harbor Hospice hosting family fun night carnival October 19th.
This is the annual Harbor Hospice fun night they have. We all changed the rules back two months ago, and they're a, they're a for-profit company, and so it has to be approved to do this in the park by the council, just need a motion to let them have it.
They're not a nonprofit?
They're not a nonprofit.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by councilman Hildebrand, second by councilman Holmes. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor? Yes, go ahead.
Where in the park did this be?
I do it down in Sandy Creek West, the Big Beck Garden, right here. I doubt if this would be the fourth year I'm in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five, consider for approval, subdivision request for Bello Luke Road by Todd McDonald. Jeremy Chestnut, building inspector.
What you have in your packets is exactly what Todd had brought to the office, sat down and being discussed here a couple of weeks ago. By city ordinance, if we have a development or a lot that's going to be subdivided, more than four parcels where the easement streets or utilities need to be extended, has to come before the board or the council to approve. Now, again, in the packet, and going by the city ordinance for dividing and subdivisions, there's a certain set of regulations and rules of how this should be documented for unit review. While this is not all on one piece of paper, it's, it's four different components that are in front of you in the packet, okay? Because it happened, just so happened that we got all of this stuff together right before ten days required to submit to this board, to be in time to submit. So you have field notes that describe seven lots to be cut out, Bello Luke, right there in front of Suncrest Circle. It's a, it's that big pasture area right past the already seven lots that have manufactured homes on it. That's the location, so these field notes here are from, basically describing these lots. I'm also in the process of obtaining a 911 address through Southeast Texas Regional Plan and Commission, and I've tried to call them, they're inundated with requests for 911, so I don't have those yet, but they will be. There was an easement that was brought to Mr. McDonald by a lobbying area from the Sewer Department for an extension to go through there. It has been recorded, it has been signed by our surveyor, our engineer, so it has been recorded, so that easement does go along that was seven lots to provide utility access. That is also looking back. Survey, and I don't have the addresses, they'll be coming, but each one of these seven lots, we don't have anything yet to go on them, it's just hope for your approval to see if it meets the criteria for approval, which goes along with the following agenda. I don't know if there's any questions about it.
So you said they have no addresses, but that will not be done, you will be contacting the plan and commission for a 911 addressing after?
Well, we're doing it at the same time, I was hoping to have them in already.
In place?
It's one of those things that we do need to get in place before it gets recorded. This is a preliminary platform, this is for the review of the board, make any recommendations for approval, for denial, whatever the case may be. This is the preliminary plat that they have invested in to show you what the plan will do. There is another step after this, which is the final plat approval. But this is just to kind of give you a general idea of what it is, and everything will come back to you upon our approval today, or any recommendations that you have, should come back to you for final approval. So again, this is preliminary.
And this is for track 10 through 16, is that correct? Did it exist on each one of those? Okay, all right, I have no further questions. Council?
Yes, about that.
Councilman sample?
The cross from Plum Press, right in the corner, is, 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 what about flooding or whatever?
Part of this preliminary plat, which again, is not all complete, he got most of everything that is required by ordinance. I was going to ask him upon any discussion here today, that the final plat that's, and it is also required to have some sort of drainage plan for each lot, okay? That could be just showing us where, because when they build that pad for these manufactured homes, which is, as I understand it, their plan, they're going to build that up, so you're going to have to show positive drainage away from it.
In that area, that area, that's that.
Yes, sir.
Bello Luke right there. We can fix it, dump over there now, maybe on Bello Luke.
Yes, sir, part of the, part of the approval process does involve them submitting that drainage.
Look at that, have that taken care of.
That's going to be on the final plat, that gets brought back with all these four different pieces, and will all be on that one page for everyone's benefit.
Okay, thank you. So basically what you're asking for today is the approval of their answer question?
Well, that's the next item I'm up to.
I mean, I mean, right now, they want to approve the subdivision, right?
If they're asking you for permission to move forward to make a final plat, this meets the criteria, and you accept that.
Thank you. Any other further questions from council?
I'm going to open mine, but we have a motion.
Okay, motion. We have a motion by councilman Holmes, second?
That's there.
Second by councilman sample. Do we have any further discussion on this?
I have one, one question, and then a comment, and I think you've already answered the question. Initially, the question was, is this going to be an unrecorded or a recorded subdivision? And I can tell you from experience, even for a preliminary or recorded, this, this is not what we typically see, even for a preliminary. So I want to make sure that when we get to finals, that it is all inclusive. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, and that's what I was hoping today, if there were any questions from anybody, that we get that out, so that we can keep this process moving forward.
Because you said this is being done as per ordinance?
Per ordinance, yes, sir. We're going to cut the board, has the authority over the approval.
Thank you. Councilman Hildebrand, you have any other?
Oh, my comment, I'm sorry. My comment, I want to say this. This is an approach that I can embrace. And what I mean by that, folks, is this, whether it's, whether it's our ordinances, our, our zoning, our charter, codes, it seems like everything we live and breathe by right now is holding people back, it's holding development back, it's holding growth back. I like this because it's, it's, now, I've always believed the solution is that we look at everything on a case-by-case-by-basis. I don't believe in rubber stamping this because that's what it says to me, you know? Our affiliation with other standards, I've never been a fan of that. I've opposed it, as a matter of fact, in several professions I belong to. I don't even know if most people in this room know where national standards and international standards come from or came from. Anybody want to fathom a guess? They were conceived by lobbying efforts that included major insurance companies, so that their risk of payout would go down. And while their risk went down, our premiums went up. Doesn't make sense to me, but even with that, even if we stay home to the same code, same ordinances, but we look at every project on a case-by-case basis, I think that's the way we make this work.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider for approval, parents request to reduce lot depth on Bello Luke Road for a new lot.
So tying back in with this preliminary plat request, the minimum requirements for lot width, there, in, in the packet, the lot width exceeds our minimum lot width, but it does not quite make a lot, I mean, now, that does two things. It does, in increasing the width, it gives them 3,000 more square feet per lot than it would if they just went by our standards, but also because of the manufactured housing industry has gotten to where most common are the 76 and 80-foot manufactured homes, and if you were to go by our current standards for lot width, you're not going to fit an 80-foot manufactured home with 10-foot setbacks on each side where it faces the road where it does it should. So in order to accommodate them, they just increased the lot width. I think it's something that we can live with if it's five or six feet short of the lot depth, to make sure that that whole road, section of road, looks the same, is that you're not going to have them put in there, the cabs won't, it's their long ways, or anything, they're all going to look like a uniform street, like a uniform neighborhood.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, this is, can we get a motion to approve? Motion by councilman Holmes, second by councilman Hildebrand. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any further discussion?
I have one quick comment.
Yes.
Actually highlighted my emphasis on the other areas, so thank you.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Chestnut. Motion passes. Item number seven, consider for approval, continuing with the services of Synergy Snyder Engineering LLC to perform an electrical rate analysis to present recommendations for setting electrical rates for next fiscal year.
So moved, is presented.
Motion by councilman Hildebrand, can we get a second? Second by councilman Holmes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, consider for approval for bids for vacuum receiving station. Urban city manager.
Mayor, council, this is for the vacuum truck receiving station. This was something that was approved for us to go out and bid on in back, I believe it was October, in October. The state, we have two vacuum trucks, and what the state requires us to do is to dump the waste out of those trucks in the area where you can drive, we've got to have factor control for flies and other bugs, and animals can't get to it. So this is a building that's going to be screened in, where you go in and do that, then close it up and dry the waste before you haul it off. So bids come in, you know, we see, we did some alternates just to see where other things would come out, and we're, we're asking to go with the base bid of 337-207, get this building built out of the wastewater treatment.
Okay, can I get a motion? Can we get a motion to approve? Can we get comments?
I'm moved, this procedure.
Okay, we have a motion, can we get a second? Can we get a second? Now, any comments? Any comments or questions? Now, I have a question. Now, this has already been approved for a purchase?
Yes.
When was that?
Well, the money was approved by the council.
Okay.
I believe it was October.
Last year.
Last year.
Okay, I thought it was the same one. Thank you. Okay, you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, consider for approval, moving forward with a charter review commission appointed by council at the next regular call city council meeting as provided by Article 10, general provisions, section 11 and 12. We get a motion to approve.
So moved, is presented.
We have a motion to approve by councilman Hildebrand, can we get a second?
Second.
Second, any questions on that?
I've, I've got a couple of comments.
Now, you're also, go ahead.
Okay, as you said, Article 10 is actually.
Article nine? Yeah, okay. Eleven.
So my comment, my second comment is this. Our mayor undertook this effort not quite a year ago, and I applaud his passion, his desire to do this. Our charter, it may have been reviewed since 1964, but not much has been done to it since. And I do believe we need, I do believe that we do need to, to review it and make some logical adjustments or amendments thereto. There are some of those items that best be left alone, in my opinion, but that said, I'm all for this, I'm not ashamed to say it out loud, but I do want some, some serious thought into not the men or women who make up the commission, but the experiences and the abilities and capabilities that they bring with them to the table.
Thank you. Yeah, my, as to your comments, councilman Hildebrand, I, I piggyback on what you just said, and I think that's what we need also.
But, uh, that said, I'm all for this, I'm not ashamed to, to say it out loud, but I do want, uh, some, some serious thought into not the men or women who make up the commission, but the experiences and the abilities and capabilities that they bring with them to the table.
Thank you. Yeah, my, uh, add to your comments, uh, Councilman Hildebrand, I, I, uh, piggyback on what you just said, and I think that's what we need. Uh, also, um, add to what, uh, Councilman Hildebrand said. The reason, one of my reasons for doing this was, number one, the amount of years that it has been since this, these items have been updated. And, uh, some of the items on there are not in compliance with the state codes and the state laws. And we need to be brought up to date. And we need the council members to consider, which is what we did last time, each council member to consider someone, so each one can have the opportunity to have someone from their district. You know, not just one person pick. I did last time, I did put some names on there, but since nobody, you know, decided they wanted to do that, then once I did that, everybody wanted to, you know, come with their own names, and I agreed with that. Pick someone from your district that you feel is though, that's going to be able to come with, you know, ideas and research and review and look and see what items on our charter and our ordinance that need to be updated. And that's what we need to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before I speak a second time, would anyone else like to speak ahead of?
Uh, it's, it's open for anyone who wants to speak.
Well, I don't want to run over anyone. Um, is there any way, and we have counsel sitting right here behind me, is there any way that we can make this, um, where the five members can maybe have some discussion between ourselves and no one, we don't run the risk of violating the open meeting thing? And that's the only opportunity?
No, we have, we could do a workshop, either executive session, but it'd have to be, it'd have to be posted.
And that's all right, too.
This is, I mean, if we, I'd have to look at that, to do a look at that and see if that's something that we would, we could, would have to go into executive session for, or just have a workshop to discuss what you want to do.
Yeah. Well, I just feel like it would behoove us to do that, um, because I may bring up a name and Mr. Holmes may have a valid reason for shooting them down. So.
Well, that would be up to the council members in their districts. I mean, you know, you may have a valid reason, but, you know, that would be, I, I'm leaving that up to the council members. You, you pick someone in your district, and if you choose to do so, then that, that's up to you. So basically, we want to approve to create the committee right now, and then we'll, then we'll worry about that, you know, at a later date. But if they decide they want to set up a workshop or whatever, okay? Kind of get a motion to approve to, uh, creating these committees. We have a motion by Councilman Sample, can we get a second?
I think we already had a motion.
Oh, we already had a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody said it?
Okay. A motion and a second.
Uh, Sam, hold on a second.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion. Yes. I did?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Councilman Sample. We've already had a vote, so.
Thank you.
All, it's unanimous. We will inform the charter review commission. The order. Okay, at this time, city council, and all members being present, except, the exception of council member McRuskin, we're in to close executive session pursuant to chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero seven-one. Consultation with attorneys regarding pending litigation and to deem appropriate take action stated above matters. We will now, as far as it's.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify something?
Yeah, let me clarify something on this, because this, we're not going into a consultation with, uh, this is not actions to take executive session, on actions for litigation. This is taking action for the, uh, city man, posting of the city managers and the city police chief position. And this is as to, because this is a personnel matter, we will be going into executive session for that.
I'm gonna have to back you up there. You were just discussing item number nine.
Oh, did I miss one?
You missed ten.
Oh, I missed item number ten?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Consider for approval, creating and, item number ten. Okay, consider creating approval for ordinance review commission appointed by council at the next regular call meeting. Uh, the other one was, I'm sorry, yes, because the other one was charter. Consider creating an ordinance review committee appointed by the council at the next regular council meeting as provided by Article three, section three point zero seven F. Can we get a motion to approve?
I move this presented.
Motion by Councilman, Councilman Hildebrand, second by Councilman Ronnie Sample. Any further discussion? All opposed? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I would like to reemphasize my points from earlier.
Okay.
With this addition concerning both items. I think it would also be advantageous for the commission to, um, visit with their representative in the event he or she has thoughts that can be shared.
Thank you. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. My apologies for skipping item number ten. Now, we will go into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one, section five-five-one dash zero seven toward personnel matters concerning the posting of the city managers and the police chief position.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Go into executive session.
Before we just miss it, necessarily.
Go ahead.
Okay, just, if, I just have a concern about us going into closed session and all we're discussing is the posting of the jobs.
We have to go into executive session and decide if that's what we're doing, if that's all we're doing once we go into executive session. If that's all that's going to be required, then we can come out and say no action and take action on this. But we need to go into executive session first. Time is six thirty-seven.
Mr. Mayor, as a member of the working press, I'd like the city secretary to record that you're not going into a meeting to discuss specific personnel.
That's correct.
Therefore, in the opinion of this reporter, it is not a legal way to go into executive session. For instance, if you was going in to discuss Mr. Kelly, that's executive session, that's personnel. But you have a broad, broad, broad stroke here. Now, y'all do whatever you want, but I want my opposition to it.
You can have that, sir, and we also have something else that we have to discuss that is pertaining to Mr. Kelly and Mr. Pointex. That's why we're going.
Then it should have been listed.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, Alan. Thank you very much.